Better turn that on. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 5, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Calabasas. Meeting is called to order. And, let's see. Tom, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Thank you. Okay. We appear to have a full complement of commissioners, and we have our city attorney and staff, so we are ready to go. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. It appears that even with the lower lights, that it's viewable on screen, so I'm going to continue. I think it came back up. Announcements and introductions. Commissioner Gia.
Nothing.
Commissioner Washburn.
I have one bit of old news, but new news. And that is that if you didn't have a chance to see that there was an expert insight into history speaker series kickoff at the library, I attended myself, and Al Knight, who is an anthropologist, talked about one of the benefits of the Woolsey Fire, and I'll tell you what that is. You wouldn't think that anything other than maybe archaeology or anthropology might be a benefit. And he made a terrific presentation on all of the new rock art Native Peoples paintings that have been uncovered because the fire cleared out a lot of the, I guess, the foliage and trees and whatever else, all around the various caves, you know, literally from the Camarillo grade to the Calabasas grade, up to the 118 freeway. And there's a whole bunch of new, really incredible, rock art that's been discovered because the poison oak is gone, a lot of the vegetative cover is gone, so they've been able to get into some of the caves and places where you can actually see stuff that you would probably expect to go to the Grand Canyon to see, or maybe to Nevada somewhere and check out what the Native folks, you know, were doing in the way of art. And some of it's really gorgeous, just amazing. So, I attended, and I would just encourage everybody, if there is another opportunity, and there probably will be shortly, it was actually put together by Deena Pitt from the Leonidovski Museum, and Al came down from the Santa Susana Mountain Park Lands Association to show all of the slides that he and his fellow anthropologists and archaeologists have discovered. So if you see an opportunity like that, don't miss it, it's fun. It's at the library, and this was at, you know, from 5:30 to roughly 7 o'clock, but it was jam-packed with really cool information. So keep an eye on that kind of thing.
Terrific, thank you. Commissioner Lozana. Okay. No? Nope. Okay, then moving on. Onto the consent calendar. We have the minutes of the meeting from May 15, 2025.
Chair, just public comments, just announce.
Oh, I missed it.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for catching that. Okay, my apologies. I skipped public comments. This is the portion of the meeting for those wishing to address the Commission on matters that are not on the agenda, seeing no one in the audience.
Anybody online?
We don't seem to be getting that anymore. I see, nope, Michael, no. Onto the consent calendar. And the minutes of the meeting of May 15, 2025. Do we have any additions, corrections, or a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes of the meeting of May 15, 2025, are approved. Onto our discussion item, item number two. Review of the Proposed City of Calabasas 2025-26 Capital Improvements Program to determine conformance with the policies and programs of the Calabasas 2030 General Plan. We have a presentation?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, good evening. I'm not sure, but I think this monitor that's in front of me is bigger than the head before, or I'm getting shorter. Good evening, and, yeah, we're going to look at the CIP like we do this time every year. When the City Council has to move into the budgeting process, part of it is including capital improvements. So, what capital improvement program is the list of improvements to public infrastructure, our sewer systems, municipal buildings, streets, highways, et cetera. And we have to look at those costs and budget for them like anything else. And under California law, capital improvement programs must be reviewed and determined to be consistent with the general plan before you begin implementing those projects. And the body to do that is the Planning Commission, and obviously, that is this body here. So, we, again, this year, will do that to comply with state law as well as our own plan and ordinance. So, what do you review when you review a CIP? You're looking at only the projects the city's taking on that are really construction, installation of new expanded or substantially rehabilitated structures or systems. You're not looking at, and you're looking at things for the coming fiscal year, you're not looking at things beyond, and you're looking at, or not looking, excuse me, maintenance, repair, and replacement of existing systems. Those are not capital improvements that require, they may obviously require capital to get them done, but they're not a capital improvement requiring consistency review. So, when you put everything through the SIV, what comes out are four projects in the proposed budget and the capital improvements program that warrant consistency review for the 2025 and 2026 fiscal year. The Muhalan Highway Improvements Project, the Los Vergenes Creek Restoration Project, the latter phase of that, the Green Streets Program, which has been going on, and we'll mention something about that later, and the West Calabasas Road Improvement. The full CIP is available with the draft budget documents at the City of Calabasas website, for anybody that wants to see that. So I'm going to go through each one of those four very briefly to synopsize what the project is, and where the project is, and why it's conforming with the general plan. The Muhalan Highway Improvement Projects is the section of Muhalan from Olapanga, west and south to the city limit line. We're talking about a little more than two and a half miles of roadway. The project would involve widening of roadway shoulders for enhanced bicycle safety, improved vehicle driver sight distances, and improved emergency evacuation. You can actually, if you remember when we did our safety element update, the ideas with the bike lanes and the shoulders, you can do two lanes, one way and one lane the other way, in an emergency situation, and this is going to allow us to do that with Muhalan. Installation of walkways were feasible, construction of retaining walls where the slopes are unstable to eliminate road closures, and then construction of culverts to replace existing undersized and failing culverts in that area. As I mentioned, it's a little more than two and a half miles, and it's basically everything from Olapanga Canyon Road, south and west, to where you leave the city. In the written staff report, there were 13 general plan policy statements that were identified that relate to this project and provide the support that it's consistent with the general plan. I'm not listing everything that is listed in the written staff report this evening, but I'll point out some of the perhaps even more relevant ones. Policy 6-5 states that you should limit roadway intersection efficiency enhancement construction to that which allow maintenance or enhancements to Calabasas bicycle and pedestrian circulation systems, and to prohibit enhancements that would create gaps in those systems. So the Muhalan Highway Project implements that policy. Also promote roadway designs that optimize safe traffic flow within established roadway configurations by minimizing turning movements, uncontrolled access, on-street parking, frequent stops, et cetera. And it meets, or promulgates that policy as well. It certainly accomplishes that. Policy 16 makes safety and convenience of bicycle riders the primary concern with regard to determining locations of types of facilities. This is obviously Santa Monica Mountains area, and the Muhalan Highway is a, I'll call it a staple of a lot of cyclists in this area. My clicker's not moving the pages. The Los Vergenes Creek Restoration Phase 3. Approximately 27 acres of hydrodynamic creek bed that will be created to help mitigate severity of major flood events. It will also enhance pedestrian hiker access in that area, in addition to providing ecosystem and habitat restoration benefits. This is approximately one and a half miles of the creek channel from Agora Road, south to where it flows beneath the southern end of Lost Hills Road. Project involves removal of fish barriers and other obstructions, stabilization of stream banks, restoration of native riparian habitat, and continued improvement of the multi-use trail that was started on the first phase up north. This is the location I just described. This is Agora Road, and Los Vergenes Creek flows south all the way down here, and then along Los Vergenes at that point. The project comes all the way down here to, basically, Danza Park. There are five different general plan policy statements identified in the written staff report, and of those, here are three of them that support a finding that the project contributes to general plan conformance determination. I've identified the wrong CIP here, it's 2025 to 2026, so pardon that error. Policy 426, continue undertaking activities necessary to fulfill the city's responsibilities as a co-permittee under the Federal Clean Water Act, including implementation of the Los Angeles County Standard Urban Stormwater Mitigation Plan. Continue to monitor emergency technologies and techniques for minimizing water quality impacts from municipal runoff and update the SUSMP as best, as new best management practices are established. Now, this doesn't get to updating that, that's a Public Works item, but this project is implementing policies and procedures to accomplish the goals that are under the, identified through the Clean Water Act and the Stormwater Mitigation Plan.
Tom, could you identify what SUSMP is for those who may not have known?
Sustained Urban, let's see, Sustained Urban Stormwater Management Plan. I think that's what it is.
Close enough.
Mitigation Plan.
Mitigation Plan. Yeah, I should have written that out. Policy 619, promote pedestrian system improvements that create sustained vibrant and active streets and major activities, as well as providing direct connections between residential and non-residential areas. And I mentioned streets there, but we're talking about pedestrian system improvements, which includes trails. And this does include a multi-use trail in the creek bed as part of this project. And 7104, restore degraded ecosystems to enhance the natural adaptive capacity of biological communities that are vulnerable to the effects of climate change, and this is clearly a degraded stream bed. It was channelized, and much of it is a concrete bankment. And so this will definitely restore that degraded ecosystem to accomplish those benefits. Green Streets Program, and I'll point out before anybody squints too hard and tries to figure out where this photograph is, this is not Calabasas, but it is a Green Streets project from another part of the country. And I was able to find that photo before I found one of our own, so I threw it in there. But this is the idea of a Green Streets program. We know, we've seen them in other phases that have been accomplished in the city. The project will enhance several sections of city streets and will provide environmentally friendly upgrades to mitigate and clean urban runoff. The first phase, Los Vergenes Road, is complete, and if anybody's been up to the northern extent of Los Vergenes Road, you've seen it. That includes the parking lot, the drainage and bioswales, and about a half-mile hiking trail. Phase 2, Calabasas Road is, will be to install urban runoff capture infrastructure, sidewalk, and street landscaping approximately 800 feet along the north side of Calabasas Road, just a little bit east of the Muero Road intersection. Basically, you can think of cross from BMW on the north side of the street. Phase 3, Muero Road, design and construct a seven-foot to 10-foot wide and 1,000-foot long vegetated center median with native plants from Muero Road, east of Los Vergenes Road, and extending to the city limit line. And I'll show you the location of that in a minute, but that's why, that's actually why I picked this photo, because I was trying to show what that could look like after that project's done. Because when you see this next slide, you'll see that there is, it's just asphalt this whole length. You don't, the median that a lot of people think of here, Muero Road, that's well landscaped, is just off of this photo to the right. But we'll have something similar after the Green Streets for the section between, within the city. So right here, it's just an asphalt, excuse me, asphalt median in this location today, but that will be substantially different, like we've accomplished in other parts of the cities through this program. And then we've got the other site, this was the second one that I described in the site in the slide before, and we've got BMW right here. So this is the area across the street from where we have a small parking lot. This right-of-way area here is just simply a weed-strewn section of unused right-of-way. It does not have a sidewalk, it doesn't have any landscape improvements, and so the Green Streets effort will improve this to make it attractive, it'll have a sidewalk, it'll be safer, and it will have improvements to help with stormwater runoff collection and So of the nine policy statements that are identified in the written staff report, here are a few to point out particularly, and one of them is to promote the use of drought-tolerant plants and efficient landscape irrigation design, and in existing developed areas, part of new public and private development approvals. And this is obviously a public improvement, and it's one that will be using native landscape and low-water irrigation, and it's also going to be doing stormwater runoff detention and filtration. Policy 426, and when it's Roman numeral four, by the way, that's referring to the conservation element. Continue undertaking activities necessary to fill the city's responsibilities as a co-permittee under the Federal Clean Water Act. This was the one I mentioned relative to the other project, getting to cleaning the water and meeting our requirements under the Federal Clean Water Act. And there's SUSMP again, Dennis. Policy 793, promote and expand the use of green infrastructure, such as street trees, bioswales, understory planting, and green roofs, which provide shading, mitigate wind, tolerate drought, and resist fire. As part of cooling and resistance strategies in public and private spaces, promote the addition of shade structures in public spaces. So this is a policy statement that's rather broad-reaching in terms of conservation. It gets to street trees and bioswales, above ground and below ground, so got it all covered. This project clearly meets that, it doesn't have, it has some trees, but it won't have any roofs, but it'll have everything else. So, those are a few of the policy statements that relate to the Green Streets program, and why staff and our analysis tells us that this project is consistent with the general plan. Then I've got the West Calabasas Road Improvements Project. Design and construct a roundabout at the intersection of Calabasas Road and Muero Road. Widen Calabasas Road for approximately 610 feet easterly from the intersection slash roundabout, and extend the sidewalk on the south side of the roadway approximately 480 feet between the Audi dealership where it currently terminates, westward to the intersection of Muero Road. So, I just described this area here, here's Muero Road where it crosses the freeway, Calabasas Road, and this is the area where this project will take place with a roundabout at this location, and then sidewalk and landscaping along the roadway to the point where we already have a sidewalk here. The project I described earlier for Green Streets in this same general area is just at the very right end of this particular photo. So it's the same area, it's all helping with Calabasas Road. As you know, from, you know, other efforts will have improvements to Calabasas Road further to the east as well. But in terms of the CIP, the fourth project, the one I just described, is West Calabasas Road Improvements, it's in this location here. Among the nine policy statements that are identified in the written report is the following. Policy statements and guidance from within the circulation element. Promote roadway designs that optimize safe traffic flow within established roadway configurations by minimizing turning movements, uncontrolled access, on-street parking, and frequent stops to the extent consistent with the character of adjacent land uses. The project is a roundabout, and it will minimize frequent stops because you eliminate idling. It's only yield for entering a roundabout, and so it meets that by having a more efficient, less gas-consuming, and less air-polluting traffic control mechanism. Table 6-1, we get a couple things out of that, and one, it says, construct a roundabout, traffic signal, or other intersection operational and safety improvement at the Calabasas Road or Muero intersection. Clearly, this project is accomplishing exactly that. Then also from that same table, improve Calabasas Road between Parkway Calabasas and Muero Road to two lanes in each direction with center-turn lanes and bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And the project east of the roundabout will be accomplishing that as well. So that was the description of the projects that are subject to CIP general plan consistency review for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, and the budget for that year. And we recommend that the Planning Commission determine that the improvements program that's been presented to you through the written documents and through the presentation today conforms to the goals and policies of the city's general plan in accordance with California Government Code, Section 65401 and 65402, and that the determination be accomplished by approving Planning Commission Resolution Number 2025-811, which was exhibit 80 of your written report. So, I'll do my best to answer questions, we weren't, I don't know that we have Public Works here, but.
All right, thank you. So, I think I'll start over on this side. Commissioner Steiner, do you have any questions or comments?
Not right now.
Okay. Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, thank you. On two slides. Slide 14, which concerns the Green Street project on the, yes, you got it, okay. So, can you put, can we put some kind of screening in that area? I know this is for water, you know, mitigation and things like that, but there's just a row of cars that, that kind of, it's not really part of our scenic corridor, you know, endeavors. Also, I mean, things conflict, we have, we have different objectives, so.
If I may?
Yeah.
I don't, I do not want to squash discussion, and certainly ideas that council may watch, but it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that today we're tasked with determining whether this is consistent with the general plan, and it is not within our purview to add to, modify in any way the actual proposed projects. Is that correct?
Yes, from staff's perspective, that is correct. The purpose of the Planning Commission is just to make that general plan consistency, not to design or redesign any of these projects. Of course, your input is valuable to the council.
Absolutely.
And as an individual, you can certainly submit those comments to the council directly or to Public Works.
If I may, for this one thing, just because the question was about this project, and the graphic, this map exhibit, isn't showing, isn't doing any favors for the project because it's just a pattern I put on a map. The design is still being done, but a preliminary design, which I did see, includes trees.
Oh, okay. I just, I wanted to know because we, because we have other.
It's going to be, the whole idea is to make it a landscape-attractive area.
Right, okay, no, that's good, because it's, we also have that scenic corridor objective.
Yeah, so I'm actually glad you asked, because I didn't want anybody thinking it's going to look like that.
Okay.
And, and I did want to make clear, I don't want to stop the discussion, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands what we are here to do today. Comments?
Oh, no, I understand.
And the comments, absolutely, because, you know, council may look at this and hear our comments, and hopefully take some of it to heart.
Okay.
Okay.
The other question I have is on slide 16, and it's, that's about widening Calabasas Road to the west of, and adding a sidewalk. And my only question there is, the sidewalk, what, you know, to go from the Audi dealership to the roundabout, what's the point of the sidewalk? I mean, how is that, I understand you're saying, is it consistent, but why, what's the point of that? The road, I understand.
There are people who walk that section of roadway who don't have the benefit of a sidewalk today.
There are people walking there?
I've walked there before.
Okay.
I think there's a hiking trail that starts and ends there, too.
Well, the trail is way west, yeah, where hopefully people aren't getting robbed anymore.
A local resident or near once-local resident.
Robbed, the cars, yeah.
And worker across the way there, has walked there many times.
Okay, good. No, no, I just wanted to know, that's it.
Yeah, Commissioner Lozana, he's right, there's a trail all the way at the end of Calabasas Road at the terminus, there's two trails.
No, I've been on those trails, but this is not that close.
Eventually, yeah, eventually it'd be nice to extend pedestrian access all the way down Calabasas Road, but this is taking it one chunk at a time.
Yeah, I mean, it would, because this would be a safer place to park, because when you park at the other, at the west end, there's been a lot of burglaries.
Correct.
Because it's kind of remote from any, any traffic.
Yes.
Yeah, makes sense.
And I've run this stretch right here, and it is dangerous to run right at that location.
Yes, thank you, thanks.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lozana?
I don't have any questions for staff, it just seems that this is all consistent with the general plan, so in terms of, you know, what we're tasked to do with today, I think it's fairly simple. I'm curious to hear from my fellow commissioners, but.
And good productive stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Commissioner Washburn?
Are we taking turns?
We are.
Okay. I do want to reserve my comments, after all the commissioners have. I do want to reserve my comments after all the commissioners have spoken. I think the staff has done a fine job on identifying the needs and interests that we have at this moment to deal with the certification or the verification that this is consistent with what we originally planned in our general plans and have done so since. And you've heard me say many times before that we need a new general plan that deals with the new reality, but in terms of where we are in the current general plan, again, the staff always does a good job of making sure that we were consistent, let's put it that way, and that, you know, they rationalized it in a way that anyone who needs the CYA, they can easily say, "We're safe." But I have a whole bunch of comments that I want to make because one of these projects, in my opinion, is unnecessary. And if we can save another $5 or $7 million, that might be usable elsewise in a time when we're dealing with budgetary constraints that are almost crippling to the city and affecting the staff and the comfort of the city and everything else, those are things I'd like to at least use this opportunity to have as a platform to, to do a little preaching. So, I think that I could easily make a motion to approve this, but I know that my fellow commissioner, Bob, has some concerns about the consistency of the roundabout, and they kind of fit what I'm thinking, but at the same time, without a new general plan timetable, it's pretty tough to argue with you or with staff, for that matter, at this point. So, I'll pass, but I'd like to have a chance to talk about some of this stuff.
Okay. Commissioner Leah.
Yes, if I may respectfully disagree with Commissioner Huzainia. Tom, as you may recall, you and I are probably the only two people who were part of the circus when it was produced. There's inconsistency in the general plan. This is not consistent with the general plan, particularly with respect to the Muero Road and the Calabasas Road. It's just not consistent with the general plan. And take the time to read it and you will find the inconsistencies. And the reason they are, they are inconsistencies between chapters and sometimes within the chapters. It's amazing, but that, that's the fact.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Washburn, we're back to you.
Are you going to comment yourself?
No, because I, I think that, I think that each of these proposed projects is consistent with, with the general plan, and I like the ideas behind these proposed projects, and I think that, again, as you mentioned, our general plan will be updated, but right now what we're working with is the current general plan, and we are constrained by making a determination of whether, whether these projects are consistent with the existing general plan, and I feel that they most certainly are. So, you're up.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll deal with the specific thing because Commissioner Leah has been here for a long time and has watched these various issues come up, and it does show the, I guess, the imperfection of any kind of a general planning process. You know, because that general plan was probably, what's the date? It says 2030, but you know, it was made in what year?
2015.
Yeah, and that's on data from 2012 and 2013, and I retired from the council in 2011, so it's all after I left. So, there wasn't anything in the way of, I guess, corporate memory, if I can describe it that way, when it comes to dealing with some very specific things that are in this plan. And let me just start with a concrete example that I'm concerned about, and that is that if I look at the expectation of fulfilling the budgetary requirement, let me see what page that's on, it's probably in my packet document. If you turn to the page that talks about the capital improvement project on the Green Streets that were next to the old City Hall or the first City Hall that we had on Muero Road and Las Virginas Road, the cost of the project to install the Green Streets program, which is nothing wrong with the project, but to my way of thinking, it's a luxury because if we spend, if I read this number right, $5,630 to put in a nice decorative median strip, I think we can find a better use of the $5 million bucks. And that's not something that's either consistent or inconsistent with the general plan. That's just a decision that, this is probably my last shot at asking the council to think about whether that's that important, to do a Green Streets project that was initially started because the Regional Water Quality Control Board told us that we need to mitigate virtually all of our runoff water, and the project that's immediately east of this is LA County territory, including all the property that's in Mountain View Estates, which is not a part of the city. We tried to incorporate that place, but the runoff that's coming down Muero from the city boundary, that's maybe 1,000 feet up the road, and where there is a, you know, a, an industrial and commercial and office center, some of which is actually quite vacant right now, I mean, Alma Waterways is not there. They're now in the former Lockheed headquarters up here. So, to spend $5 million to do a Green Street mitigation, to me seems like an inappropriate investment of very scarce resources at this point.
But aren't these funds from the, from, it looks like they're from grants or funds or something. I can't, it's on exhibit C.
I understand.
It's hard to figure out.
And there, I have a whole batch of comments that I think will be valuable when we actually get past this point of determining consistency, and then the council makes a decision on, hey, where are we going to invest the next $5 million bucks and for what reasons? But I can tell you that the Water Quality Control Board doesn't give a hoot anymore about, you know, Las, or Muero Road from the city boundaries to the west to Las Virginas Road. But they did care a lot about trying to get rid of the water out of the Mountain View Estates project. The runoff water there was potentially going to flood all the canyons and interfere with the functioning of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, so we went along with that program, and we've installed a green Parklands system of cisterning the water because we found a benefit in cleaning the water up coming out of Mountain View Estates to irrigate the landscape of our purchased park, you know, the Gates Canyon Park property, which is ours for a buck.
If I, again, if I may.
Please.
And by all means, please make these concerns known to council before decisions are made, but I know that you know this, budget considerations are not something that, you know that.
I fully understand.
Yeah.
So, as I preface my remarks, the consistency issues are not of my concern. I'm ready to make the motion, you know, that we say that we are, you know, consistent, but the irregularities that Bob is talking about and some of the other issues, but, you know, where times have changed, so the problems we're dealing with, with capital improvement, budget allocation, even though it's not our responsibility, consistency with a plan that's already, you know, 10 years out of date is sympathetic or empathetic with what Commissioner Leah is talking about, and if we don't put it on the record, it just gets considered, tossed into the bin, along with all the other things that are here. So, I will turn in my document with all my comments because it's also a means of describing what alternatives are available to us to find the money to do some of these projects without having to deal with the precious resources of $5,600,000 to put in a landscape median that isn't really of any great value, where you could do it for $100,000 of paint and, you know, Bots Dots flaps, so that people really recognize it is a median, but it could be nicely painted, just like Las Virginas Road is, where the bike lanes are now painted. So, that would save five and a half million dollars, at least at this point, and the council, I'm sure, would like to know that we have that experience and that we're bringing it back up, even though it has nothing to do with our function as a planning commission by law to cover everybody's backside. And we've done that. The staff always does a good job of making sure that we're not liable or that we're not careless and that we're not, I guess, inconsiderate of some of the facts, but with Bob's concerns and my concerns about, you know, allocation in a time of great change, and we're looking at all that, and we're not looking at any future, you know, relief from all that, I will make that comment as basically my reaction to the total thing, but I'll turn in all my comments on other sources of funding, which they're everywhere of different kinds of things, and we, we have had and are very successful in this city of finding partnerships and, you know, nonprofit organization grants and, you know, state grants for building libraries and, you know, money to build and acquire lands all over the place, and we've been very generous with the money of the people of Calabasas to make our quality of life, like the safety on Muero Road or Calabasas Road. All that's being driven by general planning that's not aware of where we need to go as opposed to where we have been and what we have to determine consistency for. So, I'm going to stop talking, and I will tell Michael and Tom that I'll give you my comments, and.
May I add a point of clarification?
Of course.
My reservations were to Muero Road and West Calabasas Road, not to the other projects.
Right.
And I, in respect to the chairman, stayed away from financial considerations. I can go on that exponentially.
Oh, absolutely. Of course, of course, and, and I think it will be valuable to, to submit concerns to council, not rely on them watching the tape on this. Do, do submit, do submit these concerns because they're valid concerns, but not for tonight.
I know we all as citizens have an opportunity to, you know, enhance the actual implementation of their projects by talking about them, but I think several issues have been raised, like the sidewalk from Audi to the traffic circle, whether you like that idea or not. It's useless and it's actually destructive to the sense of what the general plan was in the first place, which is to try to preserve the rurality and the country feeling so that the bicyclists and the walkers would find a path. And we initially intended a trail that went behind all the auto dealerships that connected all the way to the bottom of Muero, or Calabasas Road. So, that's not an issue of the staff's issue of consistency findings, because it is consistent with the physical documentation, if you want to fight your way through all the different inconsistencies in the chapters. It's not important, other than it's a point that's important to make. So, I'm making that point, but I'll move that we approve the recommendations or the analysis of the staff and send this under the council with a determination of consistency with the general plan, despite, despite Bob's accurate, I think, description of the inconsistencies that we all face.
So, what would our recommendation in effect be saying? What is the commission going to be saying?
What are, what we're going to be saying if this is approved is that these propos, these, these proposals are consistent, or let me, let me make this very specific.
What's the staff recommendation?
Well, the staff recommendation, but that recommendation is, hang on for one second.
There should be.
That we determine that the proposed 2025-26 Capital Improvement Program conforms to the goals and policies of the City of Calabasas 2030 General Plan.
Can we do it by project then?
Nah, I, I don't believe that we can. This, this, what is before us is the Capital Improvements Program, and the portion of it that applies to us encompasses the four, the four projects.
The city is required by law to do this. You know, our commission has.
We are, we are required by law to do it. Can we consider each project individually?
I mean, I believe, so we have, we provided the commission with a resolution, so the, the easiest action, right, is to adopt the resolution, which makes that determination that the capital improvement plan projects that have been discussed tonight are consistent with the general plan. However, the commission could make its own motion. It could even act to do a minute-by-minute motion and then poll any one of the projects and decide if one of those projects is not consistent, then they could make, move that recommendation forward. So, as far as I know, it's up to the commission on how they would like to proceed. We tried to package it in a resolution.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, why don't we do this? Why don't we put the motion forward as Commissioner Washburn, I believe, I proposed it, which is consistent with the staff recommendation, and we'll see if it passes as a package, and then if it does not, we will go from there. Does that work?
Yes, Commissioner. I just wanted to confirm with Commissioner Washburn that his recommendation includes the adoption of the resolution that has been presented by staff.
Right.
Okay.
But I'm sorry to interrupt, but Commissioner Washburn did mention that the Calabasas Road project may not conform to the general plan and its requirement to maintain the rural nature of Calabasas.
Right.
I'm curious about Commissioner Leah's positions on this, because this is definitely going to influence my vote.
Well, I agree. One of the unbriety was no improvements to Muero Road, for some reason, to protect the Mountain View people. Maybe we were trying to charm them by bringing our lady roses and chocolates, but that's, that was clearly through the general plan. There's all that talked about, not widening West Calabasas Road. That was part, as you read, think, chapter to chapter to chapter.
But was this, was this not before the auto overlay zone came into existence?
That didn't overrule the general plan.
It didn't overrule the general plan, but you're talking about using, you're talking about using conformance to something that talks about the rural nature in an area that is full of auto dealerships.
Well, we had to make that determination for the overlay, overlay zone itself. It's a, it's a physical boundary, and that's why.
But this is, the area we're talking about, the portion of road we're talking about is within that overlay zone, and it's.
But they're asking about compliance to the general plan. They're not talking about compliance to the overlay zone. They're saying compliance to the general plan, and it's not.
And that's the inconsistency that Bob's talking about.
Well, absolutely, there is an inconsistency, but, but there also has to be, I would think, a little bit of acknowledgement of reality, and to say that it is inconsistent with the general plan, ignoring what exists there now, doesn't seem to be a rational way to proceed.
Can we vote separately on this, Dennis, or, or do you want to just do all of it? Because I, I agree, I mean, those two projects that are mentioned, I mean, they're, they're not consistent with the, with the original intent of the general plan. You can find policies, as we have seen before, for and against the same thing, same project. So, the general plan just has things all over the place.
Well, let me ask the attorney and staff in that case. Is it possible that we can deal with? Is it possible that we can deal with the projects or the project areas that are not in controversy at this moment, and deal with them at a later time? Or are we on a deadline where we have to either determine that the whole package is consistent or, you know, or it's inconsistent? Because I think you have general agreement.
Is council not looking at this next week, at their meeting next week?
They are looking at the budget next week.
And just to kind of assist in this process, I do have the general plan up, and in the, in the, I'm trying to find it. Now I lost it, of course. Here we go. In the community design element, on page nine dash seven of the general plan, it does specifically talk about West Calabasas Road. And the West Calabasas Road master plan, it refers to that document, which was adopted in 2006, and it identifies that the intent is to provide direction on the plan development or redevelopment of private properties and the corridor, as well as the desired appearance and functionality in the public realm, including the roadway, sidewalks, lighting, furnishing, landscaping, et cetera. The general design, the design guidelines is to create an upscale country and country corporate theme. So the general plan doesn't necessarily look at Calabasas Road as a rural road. It does recognize that it is intended for auto uses at some point, and it goes on to actually mention there are two primary uses, one of those being auto-related. And so if you go back to the West Calabasas Road master plan, that's where it also talks about future improvements to Calabasas Road, including pedestrian connectivity, the sidewalks, the roundabout, et cetera. So there is a link from the general plan back to our West Calabasas Road master plan and design guidelines.
The merry-go-round side is definitely rural. That's removed from the Auto Zone.
Now, the Auto Zone didn't cover anything west of the proposed roundabout. And in 2006, we were facing the difficulty of trying to control the development that was gonna occur, and we did that by actually getting the conservancy to help us buy the land at the end of Calabasas Road in the first place.
But none of this is, none of this is west of Murro Road, right?
Yes, they are.
What am I missing? And there's the roundabout at Murro Road.
Yeah, it's east of Murro Road.
But then anything beyond that is basically undecided, because we left all of that to determine what was gonna happen to the lands to the south and the north of Calabasas Road. And the terminus of Calabasas Road at what they call now the De Enza Trailhead, and we named the trail. And the conservancy said, cool, let's do that, and have a sign that says it's the De Enza Trail. But it's definitely rural, and definitely trail and recreation-oriented property, and the conservancy owns most of it now. So that frankly obviates the need to do anything that's urbanizing on Calabasas Road from the proposed traffic circle down to the end of the road on the west.
Just to clarify, the projects on the CIP right now.
But that's not what we're talking about. We're not talking about west, we're talking about east.
Roundabout affects it all. That's the whole point.
But isn't there something in the general plan that states construct a roundabout traffic signal or other intersection operational and safety improvement at the Calabasas Road-Muro Road intersection?
I think that's uncertain.
Table six dash one. Is that not?
There used to be an element that said widen the Murro Road Bridge, that we had to fight over.
We did propose that at one point.
And that isn't even in the City of Calabasas. But I think these are, at least in my view, some of these are make-work projects, because there's grant money for this. So they want, so that's why it's here, because we don't spend money, but five million dollars is spent on things, or two million, or whatever is millions on Murro Road for two blocks of a median.
That's five, 5.6 million.
That seems just like way out of line, considering we don't even have the money to paint the crosswalk outside of the city hall. I mean, you could kill yourself crossing the street.
Those decisions belong to the city council, however.
Yeah.
So in terms of consistency, I think that we could say that it's consistent. That's why I made the motion in toto. And if the vote doesn't substantiate that motion, then we'll have another motion, and we'll figure out whether we have one, two, or three or four projects.
All right. Do we have a second to Commissioner Washburn's motion?
Which is the staff recommendation.
Which is the staff recommendation.
Yeah, I'll second that. And having said that, I can see how the general plan may conflict within itself. I mean, to maintain a rural nature, but also encourage or promote roadway designs that optimize safe traffic flow. I mean, a roundabout and the sidewalk by nature is not gonna look rural. So yeah, I'm gonna second this, especially regarding the issue here.
And my, yeah, my only comment in connection with that is, we're not looking at consistency within the general plan. We'll get there. It's coming up.
Maybe.
Well, I mean.
It's not our job.
It's not our job, but there will be, you know, the update to the general plan is coming. It's coming, but it's not before us right now. And, you know, whether the general plan is consistent within itself just isn't, you know, that's not what we're doing. You know, hopefully we'll get there and be able to do something about it as the update to the general plan comes forward, but that's not tonight. So we have a motion, and we have a second.
I'd like to add one more thing in the discussion.
Absolutely.
And that is that as individual citizens and as commissioners, we have the ability and probably the obligation to voice these concerns to council and staff.
Yep.
Because if there is any hesitation to spend 5.6 million dollars on something that doesn't really conform to what we think we're gonna have to spend money on in the future, and if we have a commitment from some organization to help pay for that, whether it's MTA or it's, you know, Water Quality Control Board, they don't pay for anything. You know, I mean, our experience is gonna have to be played out, and I would just say that I hope this discussion gets to the council through the staff, that we're uncomfortable with some of this stuff because it's old, and it isn't appropriate to the budgetary demands that we're facing these days. So I would certainly, you know, vote for this motion to determine consistency, but the consistency is gonna be ultimately the decision that the council makes on what do you do with that recommendation of consistency? And do you wanna spend that kind of money? And if you only give us a week to, you know, to, we have a big burden between now and the budgetary, you know, meeting, but the projects are not gonna go anywhere until the council says, hey, we can afford 5.6 million bucks to put in decorative landscaping.
Okay. Commissioner Lee, did you have something?
Yeah, doesn't it say here, if I'm reading this correctly, that this conforms to the goals and policies of the general plan? Clearly it doesn't.
Okay. All right.
Could I make a comment before we vote?
Sure.
So, I mean, on one level, I think these are consistent, but I think the general plan itself is inconsistent. And so I have trouble with a couple of these projects. I mean, what Elon Musk would probably call pork projects. That's the, they're just pure pork, the roundabout and the, and the, you know, the swale for two blocks. It's only two blocks on Murro Road for a fortune. I mean, it's a fortune.
But they were all good ideas in the day.
Right, right. But I think the other two projects are great and consistent, the ones on Las, you know, the Las Vergenous Creek and the Mulholland projects. I don't even know how to vote, but I just wanted to express my thoughts on this.
Okay, and again, do express them to council, because they should be aware of these concerns. But we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, I don't, do you think we need to do a roll call?
I would recommend a roll call vote.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Washburn?
Aye.
Commissioner Huzaina?
Aye. I see the issue, but aye.
Yeah. I agree, but I am an aye.
And I'll vote, I'll vote no, but they'll hear our concerns, I hope.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion passes three to two. And hopefully council will hear the concerns, but again, until it is revised, the general plan is the general plan, imperfect though it may be.
Chair, may I make one comment on the consistency issue, because it obviously comes up in cases, and courts have recognized and give discretion to the legislative body of a city to determine consistency, even when you have policies that appear to be inconsistent. And they leave it to the legislative body to figure out the consistency issue, and they get, the legislative body gets quite a bit of discretion from courts in making those determinations, so.
Well, hopefully, thank you. Thank you. Moving on, we are on to the director's report. And thank you for all of your good ideas and concerns, fellow commissioners.
Yes, thank you. And as I've done previously, what I'm gonna do is, we will forward a copy of the resolution on to council, but we will also advise and recommend that they take a look at this meeting, and we'll include a link to this meeting, so that they can go back and take a look at the comments that were made tonight. Moving forward to the next couple meetings, it looks like we're gonna cancel July 3rd. We figured it was not the best meeting to hold, right before Fourth of July. It looks like we will, we may have a project on July 17th, but as we get closer, we'll determine if it's ready for public hearing noticing. If we don't, then we'll end up canceling July 17th as well. But do plan to come back on August 7th. Also, in addition to that, I want to let the commission know that we do have our objective design standard survey up on the website. You can actually access it on the homepage. It's on one of the scrolling images on the homepage. And so we, of course, encourage all of the commissioners to take that survey, but please spread the word, and if you know anyone else that would be interested in weighing in on the exciting world of objective design standards, then please forward that along. We will also try and advertise it through social media and in the upcoming mayor's letter to the community, and it was in the June E-News. And then finally, we have formally posted the pre-approved ADU plans on the website. So those are now fully available for residents to use and available. We're very excited for that. It was a very good effort between our Building and Safety Planning and Public Works Department. So that's it.
All right, terrific. Thank you. Director's reports. Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Washburn?
I just wanna remind everybody that the Ready Calabasas Program, if you don't know what zone you're in, and what you need to do to evacuate the city with the next crisis that hits our town, and it isn't always fire or water, it's sometimes traffic, and sometimes, you know, accidents and earth movements and things like that. But if you don't know that, if you're in Mulholland, you're in Cal C-414 and C-415, it would be wise to know what zone you're in, so that if you hear that the zones on the west side of town are impassable, or the zones on the east side of town are impassable, you know where to go. And that's one of the issues that affect our next general planning thinking, because that's traffic, but then we have, you know, fire-wise planning and water-wise planning and, you know, a whole bunch of other stuff. I was gonna say, all, people need to educate themselves at this point on all the issues that are gonna affect a general plan that is now educated by fire. And we've had a bath of flood and fire that makes it important that we pay attention to what we need to do now, and not what we thought we needed to do 15 years ago.
If I may, if I may actually echo that, I think the know-your zones has been one of the most effective tools that our public safety division has had in terms of helping the community evacuate safely. Prior to that, when the sheriff's department or the fire department was dealing with an emergency, a lot of times you get people that are from out of the area that are first responders, and they'll come down here and they'll send something to the city saying, we're gonna evacuate the residential neighborhood east of the 101 off of Las Vergenous. That's because from their perspective, and because they're out of town, they just see the 101 runs north and south, according to the maps. They don't realize that here it's actually heading east-west. So they think anything on the east side of the 101 is actually, or on the north side, is actually to the east. So that has caused a lot of confusion in the past, but now using these zones, both public safety staff and community members can understand exactly what areas are under evacuation, and it has been a phenomenal tool and a game changer in that world.
Let me just put a plug in for the fact that in order to get that map and determine where I was gonna be, you know, having to deal with in C-414 or C-415, I'm somewhat on the border of those two. But I did, in fact, get two free ham radios, and anyone can get actually a ham radio, so that if your cell phone doesn't work, your computer doesn't work, your Wi-Fi doesn't work, you can always yell help on your shortwave radio, and help will come. And if you take a look at Epic FSC, that's environmental protection, I think, in Calabasas, and it's also communications, they will give you free fire-wise inspections, and they're very competent at doing so and are eager to help. The Conservation District does also a landscaping fire-wise assessment as well for free, and gives you advice, and maybe even some grant opportunities if you have large land holdings that the NRCS can help fund. And ditto with the Water District, you know, you can get MWD and Las Vergenous Municipal Water District help. There was a seminar, in fact, just yesterday, talking about the ability to get free sprinkler heads and free sprinkler controllers. They're talking about bringing back the rainwater capture devices that you can actually get, and they'll come and install it for you. And that's a big deal. I mean, it could be, and they give rebates on taking out lawn or dealing with plantings that are native plants, literally in the 10, well, these thousands of dollars, if not 10,000 with a big lot. So take a look at those resources at LVMWD.org, I think, or dot com, and then the Epic FSC. You can see that on our website here at Calabasas. And anybody who's watching or listening in one way or another should take advantage, because there's money and there's initiative there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll move to adjourn.
Hold on, hold on. I'll come back to you in a couple minutes. Commissioner Huzaina? Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, just to follow up, I wasn't sure if you said there was gonna be a meeting on June 19th, the next, the next, I don't think.
Oh, sorry, no, June 19th is canceled, as well as July 3rd.
Okay, 19, okay. And then I did take the objective standard survey, which I think is great, but there seemed to be, there was no section about, like, the height, the maximum height, or the height either within a project compared to the rest of the project, or the height compared to other buildings near it. And I, so I'll just make a suggestion that something like that, and you could devise it, because you're a planner, but something like that. As far as what Dennis brought up, I think that's great. My HOA became a fire-wise HOA, Calabasas Hills, and theoretically, someday we may be able to get, you know, it may affect our insurance. But there's also a circuit, so there's the Cal Fire Zone, and then there's also an electric Southern California Edison Circuit. And it gets a little confusing, because they're different numbers and different locations, and they'll announce. But if you get, if you get that information, they'll tell you when there's gonna be a power outage, or when there is a power outage, because we just had a planned one yesterday where I live, but now there's, but, you know, when we had like that fire, the recent one, we were notified about the power outages. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Steiner? All right. Dennis? Yes?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Hearing no objection, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.